Vicki. Welcome, everybody, to our city council meeting for Monday, January 26. Can we have a roll call to establish form, please, ma'am?
Okay, Mr. Vito.
Here.
Terry McLung.
Yep.
Troyx Elder.
Yes.
Bob Thomas.
Here.
David Mitchell.
Here.
Vicki Snyder.
Here.
We have six.
All right, cool. Pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve second.
Okay, any changes and comments, anything we need to add or delete? Vicki?
Drop number one, please, for now. Does he give it back to me? Yeah, postpone.
Under unfinished business?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Just postpone.
Yes, postponed.
Okay. Uh, yeah, we've got that up here, I think. Anything else, anybody? All right, then, all in favor of approving the amendments, I mean, the agenda as amended, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? All right, so moved. Motion to approve the minutes.
Salute.
Second.
Any errors, corrections, additions, violations? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, so moved. Well, now, we get to come to the point of allowing me the privilege of giving the state-of-the-city address, my first time.
Sure.
I'm not real sure, I'll try to keep this relatively forward. You know, I have sit in here, and it really is, it's an honor to be able to give this to this group and everything. We've gone through a lot of changes with this administration, and, of course, with retirement of several of our department heads. But I kind of bring you up to work a little bit, and some of it, I know we had talked about on our upcoming agenda, you know, with the public works, we've, I think, one of the major things we found in our public works was our water meters. We discovered we were losing a lot of water through our meters, and we were billing less than what we were being charged for. And, as in with any business, when you do that, you start losing money. And fortunately, we discovered that, and so this year, after discovery of that, we started replacement of those meters. Later on, and basically, I think I've given a lot of y'all a report, but basically, we've already replaced about 15% of our meters, and because of that, we've almost doubled our revenue in January from what it was a year ago, in January, for one month, with just 15% replacement. So hopefully, by end of summer, we'll have them all replaced, is what we're looking for in that issue. So we're going to continue on doing that, and continuing to looking at our collection systems on the town. We've had, as many of you know, we've been working with our hospital and seeing what we can do with our sewer system, on searing the west side of town. We're working with the state government to see about getting them to help us with that expense, and we're still in that process, keeping our fingers crossed, seeing where we go with that. Because of our half-cent turnback in our street funds, we're going to be able to repair a few more streets this year. Probably not a lot, because we've also ended up with some other issues with our drainage system, which we've just recently discovered. Good news, bad news, we get some money, and we're going to end up having to spend it out, plus, and we'll get into that later on under another report. We're going to continue on with the street department and its public water, with our water and sewer, and improving our streets. The building permits in our building departments increased substantially. We've gone, again, not quite double in our permitting that we've had from 2013 to 2014. We've had a pretty significant increase, and we're expecting an increase of even more for this coming year, and through there with new buildings, new construction coming downtown, new commercial construction going in. We've got the, one of the, again, one of the issues that came up on our agenda is the Clean City Ordinance, and many people have been asking me about that. And, you know, we've gotten, one of the biggest problems with that is notifying absentee landlords, which we all know is a problem. But in the meantime, we have notified several of them, and we've already had two of the projects been removed, which is pretty remarkable, considering I've gone many years without any of them being removed. We've also had a couple that were under neglect, especially down on Main Street, that are being repaired. So we're seeing improvement along Main Street in that area, too. And we're going to continue on enforcing the Clean City Ordinance, getting those things cleaned up, trying to get some of the vacant lots cleaned up, some of the cars moved that have been sitting around for a long time. And it's a slow process, but I think we're going to continue on making progress. One of the bigger issues that we've had with our police department is Earl Hyde, after 18 years of being chief of police, retired. And the good news was, we didn't have to go too far to find a replacement. We got Thomas Acord, who'd been in Eureka Springs for over 35 years, and with the police department for 16 years, was appointed chief of police on December 31st, one of Mayor Pate's final, final thing that he did in office, was getting a new police chief. But I think Thomas has been, is one of those people that has worked in the department from the ground up, starting with the bicycle patrol, and going on up to becoming one of the detectives, and getting a lot of good rapport with other communities. I'm excited, because we're also working well with, again, we're playing well with other police departments and sheriff's departments, which, again, is a first, so it's good things to come, I think, in this area and through here. They're going to continue, as always, in a lot of things that Earl had started with, with working with the schools, and continuing with that presence out there, continuing on with our bicycle patrol and through there. I'm working with the police department on some other issues that I'll be bringing before the council later on, to see about getting some things resolved that have been on everybody's mind. Fire department's another, we've lost the department head there also. Reese Williams, retired after a pretty long career, and at present, Billy Summers is the interim director and through there. With the, as many of you may have seen, we've recently, because of the hospital commission, got a brand-new ambulance, I want to say over $280,000, that didn't cost the city, that was donated by the hospital commission. At the same time, they've also, we've gotten new grants from the state, we've gotten what they call a striker battery-powered cots, so people don't have to lift people up, they're automatically racing up when they come in to be put into the ambulance. The fire department received about $23,000, $24,000 in grants last year. As always, they're continuing looking out for other grants. They have applied for a grant for a new ladder truck that will have a 75-foot reach. We don't know if that's going to happen or not. If it does happen, this would be a $550,000 purchase, and the pocket that would cost Eureka Springs would be $26,000, if approved. So that would be another bonus for your experience. You know, we're pretty blessed to have, with a small city, of having our EMS and our fire department. We have a lot of paralegals and EMS people, and they're some of the better-known people in the state. We've raised the salaries up to where we're not losing them to other cities, and we're able to keep those people in-house, which is a blessing. Again, the transit department was a good year up there. We are in the process of getting another new trolley. This one will be what they call a low-floor trolley, that will help the riders interim to it with a lower step, first step. Eureka Springs, I'm not sure if the citizens know this, or in the council, but the Eureka Springs Transit is the only transit in the state of Arkansas that's self-supporting, I shouldn't say self-supporting, it's the only city that doesn't require city funding. All the other transits in the state of Arkansas require funding from the city, so because of our tourism and our riding ability, membership, and the federal government basically support our transit force, which also helps not only the tourists, but also the locals. They're also adding some new routes. We've added, last year, they added a route out to Lake Leatherwood. So we're going to be able to have, not only our public, but our visitors will be able to take the transits out to Lake Leatherwood and back. They're also going to be adding, because of our ecotourism that we're promoting, they're adding bike racks to some of the vehicles, so some of the people who have bicycles can put their bikes on the transit and be able to go from place to place on that. Without the federal funding, we'd lose probably around, between $400,000 and $500,000. That's how significant the federal government has been playing with our transit department and through there. As far as 2015, there's not going to be too much change. The good news is, you know, our trolleys fare is going to remain pretty much the same, $6 a day for the all-day rate, unless we see an increase in membership and ridership, and the gas prices go down, then possibly our membership or our fees may go back down to $5 for an all-day pass, which is still pretty cheap. The operation hours will still remain the same. They are looking for another trolley to be coming in later on this year, so that's another $210,000 vehicle that the city will not have to pay for, that will be provided for by the federal government. So overall, the transit has had matching funds and total grants of about 500, almost $600,000, $597,000, which has been a nice boost to our department for that. As far as finance department goes, we've pretty much are planning to go paperless. You know, that's at least to the extent possible. We're not quite complete, or I should say, the legislative audit is complete, although they're still doing some documentation, and you'll be receiving your notification of your, the final audit sometime in next, probably next month or two. Again, I think that will probably be for 2013, if I'm not mistaken. We're always a year behind, it won't be, yeah, it won't be 2014, it'll be 2013. So, but again, we're looking for, we hadn't heard anything negative, and we're looking for a good report from the audit people on that also. The CAPC, as most of you know, we had a record year for 2014. We had a little over $1,200,000 in collections, which is the best year we've had. The projection that the CAPC was looking at was 1.22 million, so we surpassed the estimated budget that they had established for that. We had probably, because of the free press that we've received, and this is basically just the positive press, not counting the negative press, we've had over $3 million worth of free publicity for Eureka Springs, which is pretty remarkable for a little town of 2,000 people. And again, we're trying to, I know the 2015 plans include looking out and reaching out to other markets, including Louisiana and going down into Texas, and again, hitting some of the places up in Missouri, Kansas City, and St. Louis and through there. So we're looking at, especially with the price, gas prices going down, looking for a good year. And from what I've seen from last week or two on the parking lots, it looked like they've been pretty full, and people are coming over, so it's been positive. With the parks and recreation, we've had, again, we have a great group of people who are able to write grants. The Eureka Springs Parks Commission wrote and received over $150,000 in grants this last year. Part of that was for the trails, they received a grant for the restoration of the Harmon Park Building, and also for building the 100-person pavilion out at Lake Leatherwood. And as you remember, in 2014, the city council passed a resolution supporting the trails, master trails, and they've done a wonderful job on that. And once again, one of our key employees that we lost, Donnie Allen, after 12 years, we've had Pat Lujan come in and has stepped in and done a wonderful job. Pat's done a great transition from, I didn't think anybody could replace Donnie, but if anybody was able to, Pat has done a great job with the parks, and has put his own signature on the landscaping around and through there. So I'm real excited to see the work that he's done out through there. Also, I don't know if y'all have been out to Lake Leatherwood lately. If you haven't, you'll be in for a pleasant surprise, and that the, there's no potholes in the road between the highway and the lake. We've got it all new paved, and that is a wonderful and pleasant surprise. So if you haven't been out there, go out and check it out. We've also are working with, and will be bringing before the council, a, and this is because of the Springs Committee, a means to help private residents ensure their sewer lines. And this is something where they'll be able to pay an insurance fee and help, in case their sewer lines break, will help pay for that replacement, which is a big cost. And we're looking, trying to get that, and that'll come before the council in 2015. We've also had one of the first dog parks opened up last year, very successful and through here, and, you know, special thanks probably goes to the Eureka Springs Dog Park Committee for coming up and establishing that work. Part of the grants that they have done, not only the trails, but like I mentioned, was the, also the Lake Leatherwood City Master Plan and through there. We have been very blessed with, I think, with our work that we've had last year and with the people coming in. I think this year, we've had an opportunity to bring, for all of us to start working together, and hopefully to achieve some positive progress toward the betterment of the city. There's a lot of difficulties that we're going to be facing, of course, and one of them, again, we'll have a report on that, but we've got some issues with our underground drainings that we're going to be facing with. That's going to be, we're going to have to work hard to come up and find the money to be able to solve that. There isn't any problems that you can't solve with money, but our problem is lack of money. So we're going to have to figure out a way to keep our going on through there. But, you know, I think it's important for us to keep our thoughts on the future and see, as we all, as elected officials, working together, make sure that we're working in a positive manner to ensure the greatest potential that we have. We've got a great opportunity. I know we have several new attractions and businesses moving in. I hear about the new business, or about businesses leaving Eureka Springs and how bad it is, but I see and know of these new businesses that are going to be coming in and going to be developing a lot of employment and new attractions for the city, and that's pretty exciting. And I know new businesses that are going to be replacing the businesses that leave. When you're in a tourist town, we have that attrition that's going to be a natural part of the tourism, and we'll have people replace that and new businesses come in. So I think a lot of it is, you know, I'm kind of always reminded, I mean, we're, we talk about our main economy is on tourism, and as I mentioned last time, I've established a task force on economic development, and a lot of this is a result from Deep Perkipal and David Mitchell coming up and wanting to get some people together. And one of the things that I've seen over the years is that the left hand doesn't always know what the right hand's doing, and hopefully, with this new task force, we have a group of people in all aspects of the economy of Eureka Springs, working together toward a common good. And we won't be looking just at tourism, which is, of course, our main business and through here, but we're going to be looking at alternative and finding ways that we can attract new light businesses to come in. I hate to say the word industry, but it's basically new businesses coming in, whether it's being focused, and a lot of it may be focused on the education, bringing in new and higher education facilities in Eureka Springs. We're looking, we've got another group that's working toward the old high school, and trying to create that into a, another destination that would also be a community center with possible future swimming pools. I mean, I've heard all my, well, for several years, about how Eureka Springs doesn't offer anything for its locals, and this is an opportunity that we have to develop a building for our locals in the community center and swimming pool, and some new businesses. Again, it's not something that's going to happen overnight, and we've been working on it, and, again, it's a group of people that are coming together for the common good and working towards that aspect of it. I think many cities across the United States that depend on tourism are feeling that the pinch, and I think we've been real lucky in seeing our tourism may not have increased as much as we want it to, but we are growing, and I think if we can maintain a positive attitude and work with one another in being helpful to everybody around town and seeing what we can do to help, I think we're going to have another good year this year. It's one, I think, one of the best we can have. You know, I'm always kind of reminded, of course, that one of John Kennedy's famous sayings is, you know, "Ask not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country," and I think that implies to Eureka Springs. You know, it's not what you, what can Eureka Springs do for me, but what can I do for Eureka Springs? How can I help? What can I do to help? Be of service and through there. We have a lot of commissions in Eureka Springs, and we have some that have vacancies in through here, and we've had vacancies for a long time. If you're interested in being of service for Eureka, come down and apply. We've got some vacancies, I think, I'm not sure on the planning and maybe the HDC, but we always have vacancies coming in, so come down and see what we can do. And I think, you know, it's the, it's taken a little bit of commitment, but you see the people around this table, we've, this isn't y'all's first time around these tables, it's not my first time sitting here, and we give it our time, so we can make Eureka Springs a better place. And I think we can all agree that we all think, and at least I do, and I think y'all do, too, Eureka Springs is the best place in the world. I mean, we wouldn't be here if we didn't feel that way, and I think it takes us to continue on that effort, and so we're going to have to give back to Eureka Springs, so we continue to make it and call it home, and continue to make it better. It depends on all of us, not just one person, it's not just the city council, it's everybody in town, it's the citizens, it's the waiters, the waitresses, the shopkeepers, the owners, all together, pulling together to make it the best. Our quality of life depends on it. One of the things that, you know, we've been real fortunate, again, to do, and I think if we work together and strive together, we can make it and keep Eureka Springs the diamond of the Ozarks. Anyway, that's kind of my report. Thank you all.
Thank you much. Thank you, Mayor.
Onward now to the next order of business. Speaking of which, it's commissions. We do have a, Steve Beecham is reapplying for the planning commission, and I think y'all have his, I'm not sure if you have his application there, yes, Terry?
I'd like to make a motion to reapprove Mr. Beecham back in the second mission.
Got a motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Congratulations, Steve, if you're still down in Mexico. I don't think we have anybody else coming up at this point. Do you have any public comments? Hey, Duncan? Come on up here.
I don't know if most of y'all know me around here. I've been here for 100 years. I'm with American Legion Auxiliary Unit 36, and we are trying something new this year. We're going to have a veterans memorial parade on Memorial Day, May the 25th, and we have already turned in our permit, it has been approved by the powers that be in town. And what I'm approaching you all for tonight is, first, I'd like to tell you a couple of people that are going to be here for it, we're kind of proud. I have approached the 399th out of Fort Leonard Wood, and their marching band is going to be here, and it's going to appear in the parade. I also have spoke to the first sergeant at the ROTC, Army ROTC, at the University of Arkansas, and they are going to grace us as to be our color guard that day. And I have talked to US Army retired Colonel Mike Ross of the, he most recently has been over the 142nd out of Berryville and North Little Rock, and he is going to be our grand marshal. And that's a few of the things we've got going, we've got some other things going, too. But those, after the parade, then, the 399th is going to do a concert, we're going to have a memorial service in Basin Park. The 399th is going to do a concert, and Colonel Ross is going to do the memorial service at the, in the Basin Park, and then we'll have the color guard, of course, do the ceremonies there in Basin Park. And we're inviting all veterans around the state, we're going to advertise in all the state newspapers and everything, so that all of the veterans around will know about it and everything, and we're inviting all the veterans to participate. We're going to try to mainly honor our, we're not, I won't say mainly, but we're pushing to honor our World War II and Korean vets. to honor our World War II and Korean vets. We're going to have our color guard to lead them in the parade. And then behind them will be our Vietnam and Afghanistan, Iraq, so forth, veterans behind them. And we're going to plan on having another honor guard to lead them after that. But what I'm here to ask you all tonight is, I would like for the city council to please, and I say pretty please, to try, we're going to, to, if you all will tell us that you will be there, and this is the reason I'm coming in January, is to give you ample time to plan this, but I want the city council to plan on being there as a unit. And we will provide you with whatever type of transportation that we need to have you all as a unit in the parade and then at the memorial service. But we will get a trailer or whatever we need and decorate it and whatever for you all to, to ride in, a pickup truck or whatever. We might get Terry's pickup truck for you to ride in, whatever.
I'll drive.
But anyway, we just would like to see you all as a unit to represent the city, and that's what I'm approaching you all for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, that's the only public comment we have, so. Next order of business is ordinance 2220 on the CAPC membership. Are we wanting to read that? James?
There's still a lot of confusion out there regarding this ordinance, whether or not it's legitimate. I've received correspondence, Attorney General's opinion in 2003, that the Arkansas Constitution clearly states that any people serving on commissions have to be a member of living in corporate city limits. And unless somebody's amended the Arkansas Constitution, I have questions about that.
Maybe we better have a motion to discuss.
I'll move that.
Okay, Terry?
Yeah, the, the state legislature wouldn't have, wouldn't have passed the statute back when they did if, if they had thought it was an error. And, and there's been plenty of time since, since that time, I've not seen that opinion, but, you know, there's, there's been plenty of time for resolution to be made if that was a difficulty. I don't see why we can't just go ahead and, and pass the ordinance as we've got it constructed. We need to do the third reading and go on.
James?
Now, I've been gone for the last 10 days, but I'd also received correspondence from the Chair of the A and P asking us to hold off on this.
We did have at the last meeting, and I had not heard back from them on this one, so I'm, I'm at a loss as to where we are.
I've moved to table till the next meeting, till we can get this, and I'd also part of that motion is ask the city attorney, because my understanding, the legislature can't pass an ordinance over ruling the state constitution.
If I mean questioned about that, yes, certainly the legislature cannot change the constitution. Now, whether the Attorney General's opinion is 100% correct, that is an opinion, but it is not a ruling from a court. So it may very well be, but from the other perspective, Mr. McClung says, well, it's been around for a while, and it hasn't been brought up. It usually isn't challenged until it's done either in a court. So we might be giving the opportunity bypassing this for that first court challenge to come up to the legislature's action. And so it may be very, well, something you want to proceed at very cautiously, because you don't necessarily want to be the test case, but although Eureka has done that before.
This will be consistent.
James did make a motion to table.
He didn't get a second, did he?
No, no second.
I don't know if it's out of order. Okay.
All right, go ahead.
Motion to table?
What, a second? What did you, what was the?
Motion to table till the next meeting, till we can get this sorted out, because I, the last notice I had from the Chair of the A and P was to hold off.
See, and I thought they just wanted us to wait until this week, and they would have had something for us.
There's a CAPC person. Okay, so we don't have a second. All right, Terry?
The issue, the issue at the last meeting was nothing in regard to what James had brought up. It was in, in regards to whether we can do three members or four members, being from the, from the collecting end of the, you know, as, as being collectors, where it currently says at least three, and we have changed it to, that the four members shall be collectors. And basically, and that's what we were waiting for from the Attorney General, and we haven't got anything, you know, let's, let's go ahead.
So is that a motion?
Yeah, I make, what, what I would like to do is to make, to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2220 on its third, final reading by title only.
I'll second that.
Discussion? James?
It will not be a seat available on A and P for a year. I don't understand what the haste is.
Yeah, I don't either.
I mean, we've got months before any opening will come up on the CAPC, so, I mean, if you want to proceed against the wishes of, I mean, you know, I would appreciate it if it wasn't a problem that the Chair would have been here to discuss it. But the fact is, he's not here. And I haven't received clarification from them, and I've also received, I'll tell you, it was Bob Hurvis sent me the email that, you know, we can't do that. So, and I'd like to bring that with me, but I will forward it to your office so that...
Mickey?
Okay, so wasn't that the request from Rags last time was that we wait until this week because there was this possibility, but they haven't bothered to contact us or come or whatever?
Actually, the letter states that he would like for us to hold off until they get clear guidance from the Attorney General.
Oh, okay.
They have asked, Mike Maloney's asked the Attorney General for his opinion on this, and so wanted us to hold off on any action until they get guidance on it. David?
Holding off, even if we pass it, obviously, it's not going to take effect for a year, so they've got plenty of time to get some feedback, and if we have to, we'll adjust it accordingly if we need to. So it can, you can look at it either direction. I mean, you can pass it, you got to hear.
Maybe if we pass it, they'll get a wiggle on it.
Well, it's, it's their commission, and if they want us to wait, if James has indication that they want to get things cleared up by the Attorney General, it's their commission, I, I think we should follow their lead on it. I mean, I, you know, if they want us to wait, I think we should wait.
Terry?
There has never been a poll or straw vote, or anything, a vote taken by the...
By the commission?
No.
Okay, so Ragsdale just speaking for himself?
Yeah.
Oh.
Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of reading this on its third reading by roll call?
We need the roll call.
Yeah, that's what it said, by roll call.
No.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Elder?
No.
Ms. McClung?
Yeah.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Excuse me, 4-2.
All right.
Ordinance 2220 and ordinance amending chapter 2.56 of the municipal code pertaining to the advertising and promotion commission for the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas.
Terry?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2220 on its third and final reading.
I'll second that.
All right, we need a roll call on that. Okay.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Elder?
No.
4-2?
All right. Next order of business, repair parking lot. We have met with, actually, I guess, when, last week, Terry and I, and D. Perkypal, Duane, Rob, some other people went down underneath the auditorium to look and see what the condition was down in through there. When we got down to there, we discovered what had been a, at one time, the tunnel was, was showing signs of failure, had completely failed. So we came back out and pulled the storm drain grate off of the parking lot and called the fire department, had a ladder put down, and went down to see what the condition was there. The condition, the good news is that the failure of the tunnel was on this side of the auditorium, instead of being under the auditorium. It's, it's in the parking lot side, probably about where the park, where the sidewalks are of the auditorium. And it extends about 10 to 15 feet south toward the, toward the courthouse in bad condition. Now, the, the failure is just in one spot. We met today, Mr. Perkypal and Bill Hathaway, structural engineer, Duane, myself, to discuss what, what needed to be done. And basically, we're still coming up with a plan on, it's obviously, it's a serious condition, because it basically, what used to have a two-foot-by-two-foot, two-foot-by-three-foot opening for the water to go through is all dammed up. And there's a small opening, D. Perkypal said, you know, he was looking at maybe an eight-inch opening diameter for the water to go through. When we have a flood, it can theoretically back up all the way up into, and flood up into the courthouse, because the water just will not go anywhere. And not if, but when, because we know these 500-year floods happen. I have gone ahead and notified the county judge that because of that condition, it's a lot more serious than what we had originally thought, that we were asking for the quorum court in the county to participate in the repair. Judge Bars understood and said what needed to be done was to have a ordinance drawn up and submitted by the quorum court members. So I contacted one quorum court member, Rich Lamont, who I think is out of town, on vacation somewhere, I haven't been able to talk to him, to see about getting a, an ordinance drawn up to allow the quorum court to participate in the repairs of it, because this is, again, a serious condition. And it's not only affecting the parking lot, which we don't want to get into that, but it's going to be affecting their building, which is a serious condition, and they've put a lot of money into this project. I've also contacted the Director for the Natural Resource Commission, Randy Young, along with Senator King and Representative Ballinger, and told them of our situation. I've also contacted the, some other people trying to make sure and see if we can find some other resources, financial resources, to help us pay for this. We're now looking, well, we don't really know what the cost is for sure. One of the people that went down under the tunnel with was Lowell Johnson, but I've also talked to Arlie Weems about doing the work, I mean, seeing what his thoughts was. Arlie has done a lot of excavation work around here and knows what these parking lots are like. So right now, we could be looking at anywhere from, depending on how much the city can do, and city manpower and stuff, anywhere from 60,000 to 150,000, possibly 200,000 if the state gets involved in various concerns and stuff like that. That's worst-case scenario. So right now, we're looking to see where we can find some, first of all, finding the resources, financial resources, to help us do this. And then the time limit, which is another problem, is we'll be tearing up, because of the conditions that has to be done, we'll have to widen the parking lot at an angle so there's no cave-in. And so we'll be taking in probably six parking spaces going out about 60 feet, 30 feet in each direction, for a total of probably 20 to 30 feet toward the courthouse. Estimated time of work depends again, could take a month, could take six weeks, could take two months, depending on conditions and how we do this. We're looking at every condition of putting in concrete reinforced pipes with a manhole going down to, to forming our own concrete basin down into there. So we're still working on the plans, trying to come up with, with some more detailed plans, so we can give them out to some contractors, so we can get some better estimates. It's going to be real hard to get a firm price, because we don't know what's under the pavement under there. We, we, you know, we don't have a clue until we start digging down there. Arlie knows pretty well, because he dug up some work behind the courthouse here and down below. But again, it's, it's just, we're in the process of contacting people and seeing where we are. Mickey?
I don't want to snidely say if they had taken care of this four or five years ago, so I won't, but they may want to think about that. May I suggest, since it not only is now involving their parking lot and their building, that they come up with the money and rather than us come up with money, we offer some of the labor, whatever it is that we can help with, as opposed to us having to come up with cash dollars? Is this feasible or possible?
Mr. McClung?
Well, personally, at this point in time, I think we need everybody involved that we can get because of the timeframe that's necessary. We're fortunate that, that the appearance, at least on this end, I can't speak for down below, down, down by the Grand Central, the shape of that one, because I didn't get to go on with them that morning to follow there, but I know there's some problems down there too. But this is confined pretty much to the storm, between the storm drain and the building. Now, however, that has, as the Mayor has said, that that storm drain will have to come out and, and all be redone, but it will also allow the city, when that's all opened up, to, to go in underneath the auditorium, and there are some piers there that have been, that have deterioration from, from, you know, from, from the water. And that they'll be able to go in and form around those and, and pour some reinforcement concrete and, and to re-strengthen that while that's all open. I think that's probably part of the plan. We certainly talked about it the other day, is it, is it, is something necessary to do. So it's, I mean, it's, I hate it, but... So it's, I mean, it's, hate it, but these are things that, what Rob, that works for the city, Rob was down there August fourth, I believe it was, August fourth, August eighth, and he said they were able to crawl from where we had to stop at the end of the building to the courthouse. There's no way you could get through there now, and it's that bad.
Mr. DeVito?
Do these inlets on Main Street feed this channel here? Should we consider blocking those off?
It's minor, probably. I mean, there's, I don't know, that's something I will ask, I mean, that's a good thought. Yeah. A lot of our water comes barreling down the streets anyway. There's two, three, I think, there's one up by halfway up Planter Hill, I think. And then I think there's another one across from local flavor somewhere in two there.
Trial de vote, yeah.
Yeah. Is there another one down here?
There's one there in front of the Legion Hut, storm drain there.
That's what I was talking about.
I mean, it couldn't hurt if we have a three-four-inch, three-four-inch rain.
No, it wouldn't hurt. It wouldn't hurt to block them off, that's true.
Yeah, with spring coming, you know we're going to have some flooding.
Yeah, I don't know where the rest of that water comes from. I mean, it's the springs everywhere else, but yeah, it wouldn't hurt. I'll mention that to Duane, good suggestion.
Well, this, the water comes, actually, it goes under the cat house. It used to be a creek, well, it's still Loot Creek. So it sounds to me, if that's totally blocked off there where the auditorium is, that sounds to me like an emergency situation, that that has to be excavated pretty quick and get rid of that rock, even if we don't, I mean, we're going to end up with a giant hole there. But I can just visualize the whole bottom floor of the courthouse flooding and the records and the papers, and I mean, that would be a disaster. I mean, something's got to be done quick.
It's not totally blocked, but it is restricted to a very heavy degree.
Well, the hole's only so big.
It's restricted.
It's restricted.
That's not even going to handle a drizzle.
It's nothing that we're going to be able to wait around till next year.
No.
Can I be snide now?
No.
Just let it go.
We've already realized that, and that comment's been made, yeah. Anyway, that's the status. I appreciate the suggestion about blocking off storm drains, and, you know, we'll, I'll be talking to our, to the county judge and the quorum court. You know, it's, the good news is, we do have three members of the quorum court on this side of the river, so that helps.
That helps.
You know, so.
Three?
Three, I don't know.
All right, moving on.
Can we swim?
Can we swim? There really isn't any update on the new hospital from what I gave you the last time that I know of? I mean, it's, we are still, I haven't heard anything, and I wasn't really not anticipating hearing anything, probably, I would say, from next month sometime.
There was an article in the paper that said that they'd retain the architects on them, I guess, for the next phase as far as, you know, trying to get together the bid package and.
No, they're just getting cost assessment. Yeah, getting cost assessment, yeah.
Getting cost assessment, so they can go.
And they told me that the last, when I came at the last meeting here, so, you know, they're on track. They're proceeding. It's a slow process.
Keep it on.
All right, next ordinance, twenty-two-twenty-two. I am going to step down from the chair and have Mr. DeVito come in.
I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place ordinance number two-two-two-two on its third reading by title only.
Second.
So moved.
Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll plays.
Oh, I thought he made the motion.
Yes.
Ms. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Ordinance two-two-two-two, and ordinance providing for the employment of the mayor to do business with the City of Eureka Springs while serving as mayor.
Okay, Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the third reading of ordinance number twenty-two-twenty-two and add to it the emergency clause as prepared.
It's a question for the attorney, should that be two separate motions?
Typically, it would be two separate.
Two separate, okay.
Okay.
I'll retract that second portion.
Second of both.
Okay. It'll be a roll call vote again.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Six-zero.
Mr. McClung?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we enact the emergency clause in relationship to ordinance twenty-two-twenty-two as prepared.
Second.
Mr. Mitchell, second.
Oh, you did?
Five minutes ago.
Okay.
It'd be a hand vote?
It probably should be roll call also.
Mr. McClung?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Emergency clause, section three. The due to need to complete timely current projects and to assure uninterrupted work thereon and for the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of the city, if those projects help assure an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage by the Eureka Springs City Council and signing by the Eureka Springs Mayor.
Great job, James.
Next time y'all, next time y'all should just say where we are.
All right, next order of business is our fluoride letter, and Mr. Weaver's review.
Basically, I've, I guess, you go.
Can I get a motion? Mr. Mitchell, discuss.
We haven't been doing it, but, okay.
Basically, I've looked at the letter. I don't think that the letter has anything that is demanding anything of anyone that is beyond the scope of what can be requested by the council. So I went ahead and prepared, at the request, I believe, of the mayor's office, a short resolution to approve and send it if you so desire. I don't know that it's going, what effect it'll have, not guaranteeing anything there, but I don't see anything that's going to create any major trouble for the council if it so desires to send this letter.
Mitch, James?
Therefore, I would make a motion to assign this resolution a number and read it for passage, including the letter mentioned in the resolution.
Second.
Discussion. Okay.
Yes, sir. Question for the attorney in the body of the letter, and I think everything's fine there. The intent was to be sure to bring forth to the director and state health officer that the concern, that what we were hoping to get is that either the supplier and/or Carol Boone-Bother would have, be able to produce a letter that was stating that the fluoride chemicals were not harmful, therefore attempting to basically allow them, Carol Boone, if they did not get a letter from any supplier, that said that the chemicals that were being supplied were safe for human consumption and/or external use, that it would potentially put them in a liableist position in the future, should any litigation go their direction, because they basically went on record as saying that it was not harmful. Did you, was that clear in the letter?
I don't believe the letter places that liability on anyone. It may put them on notice.
Notice, yeah.
But as to actually establishing liability if they go ahead, I don't think it does that. I think to try to actually place liability probably is beyond the ability of this council.
Well, sure, it's beyond the liability, but at least it doesn't hurt to draw up that point.
It certainly puts them on notice that the council has that concern.
Good. That's what I wanted to know.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of reading the resolution passing as written?
Probably should be roll call.
Second, okay, roll call.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Definitely.
Six-zero.
All right.
The resolution number will be six-five-three, a resolution regarding letter in opposition to possible contamination of the Eureka Springs city water supply. Whereas the city council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, having been informed that the state intends to require fluoridation of the city's water supply, and whereas there are concerns over the purity of the chemicals currently used in water fluoridation, and whereas there are recent scientific studies indicating that contaminants may have adverse effects on the human body, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the attached letter be sent to Dr. Nate Smith, ADH Director and State Health Officer, expressing the concerns of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas.
Could.
The motion was to also read the letter.
Right.
That's it, it's passed.
Okay, yeah.
And the letter.
And the letter, oh.
Dr. Nate Smith, ADH Director and State Health Officer, Arkansas Department of Health, four-eight-one-five West Markham Streets, Lot thirty-nine, Little Rock, Arkansas, seven-two-two-oh-five. Dear sir, at the regular session of the eighty-eighth General Assembly of the State of Arkansas in two thousand and eleven, State Bill three-hundred-and-fifty-nine, Act one-ninety-seven was passed. The bill is entitled, "An Act For Certain Water Systems To Maintain Level Of Fluoride To Prevent Toode Decay And For Other Purposes." This bill requires that some publicly-owned water companies add a fluoride compound to their water supply. The Carol Boone Water District, from which the citizens of Eureka Springs, Arkansas obtain all our water, is one of these systems. We believe that unless the compound used is unequivocally guaranteed to be pure and not contaminated with other elements, drinking this medicated water, bathing in it, and using it to wash our clothing could be harmful. On three separate referendums, we asked our citizens to vote regarding adding fluoridation, and the matter was defeated every time. This fear still exists in the majority of our citizens, who have no choice because of this mandate but to use this water. They are worried about other trace elements like lead, arsenic, and aluminum commonly found in these compounds. Therefore, we respectfully request that the Arkansas State Board of Health issue an order to strictly enforce the rules and regulations pertaining to public water systems as revised by the State Board of Health, February twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen, pertaining to the requirements of Section seven, Paragraph G, "Approve Chemicals, Materials, Equipment And Processes To With." Quote, "All chemicals added to the water and all materials in contact with and processed or treated water shall be certified as being in compliance with ANSI, NSF Standards sixty and sixty-one as applicable. In addition, all products required to be lead-free, as determined through Section one-four-one-seven of the Safe Drinking Water Act, forty-two U.S. Congress, three-hundred-G-six, shall be certified as being in compliance with NSF ANSI three-seventy-two or NXG of NSF ANSI sixty-one. Certification shall be made by an independent agency. Self-certification by the manufacturer will not be accepted," end quote. We ask that proof be in the form of letters, both from the supplier and the Carol Boone Water Board, showing a complete independent analysis from reputable laboratories, both here and in the country of origin of the compound, containing all trace, all the trace ingredients, a guarantee that the compound is safe for use internally and externally if added to the water supply, and a guarantee that they will be liable if the compound is proven to be damaging to the health of the individual consumer. We believe that if this should not come to pass, we have the legal right to ask for an alternative to this water. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Thank you.
Could I ask that a copy of this, maybe you intend to do this, a copy be sent to Senator King and Representative Ballinger, because it will affect their Water Accountability Act that they're bringing forth? Okay.
Sure. Good suggestion. All right, new business, Clean City Ordinance, Noise Ordinance. I kind of briefly mentioned it when I was talking about the state of the city. So I guess, do I have a motion to discuss?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right. Briefly, what the building inspector has done so far is, we had, seven property owners had, were notified and sent letters, certified letters, of demolition by neglect. Of those seven, two have been returned for undeliverable addresses. Of the five remaining, three have been approved for demolition, with two already being removed, and one is in the bid process. And the other remaining two are being repaired as of the date. The two that we're trying to, the undeliverable addresses, we can't find an address that the owner, where the owner is, that can accept a certified letter, and that's always a problem. Sometimes these are absentee owners, I don't know if these two are not, I don't think they are. I think they're, according to the property tax, they give one address, but nobody will accept a letter at that address. And then if it's out of state, then it's almost impossible to get them to address that, but we're still in the process of doing that. One of the other issues that was brought to my attention was some old cars being on public streets, and I'm going to be talking to the owner about that and see if we can't get that one resolved on that area in two there. Noise ordinance, I had talked with the Thomas A. Accord, our new chief, about this issue, and I didn't get any specifics about citations or violations or any of that, but we did talk about how it appeared that the noise issue has, no pun intended, quieted down a little bit. I think last year, after y'all passed the ordinance, we did see some reductions in noise from vehiculars. And I talked to Mr. Accord, Chief Accord, too, about keeping on monitoring that, and in fact, this afternoon, when we were over talking about the lot, one of the patrolmen that walks up and down the street, we got to talking about enforcing the noise ordinance with vehicles this spring coming in. And I think we're going to see some good, I won't say enforcement, but hopefully we'll see the reduction of noise in two there, because we are a town of visitors, and, you know, it's a matter of how we're approaching them in being able to reduce the noise level, not only for vehicles, but also, we had this for years, as many of us remember from local establishments, so, and we've seen the reduction in that. Mickey?
Well, I'm glad you brought that part up. I don't know if, I can't remember how we separated vehicle noise from music noise in an establishment, but I was not aware until a few months ago that the decibels we have set for bands in an establishment, a restaurant, what have you, those decibels are the same as the. are the same as if James was running his dishwasher. And you know how low your dishwasher is, which is not really loud. That ends up being the same level that the bands are allowed to perform at. And I don't know how many of us have worked in the kitchen, I know, hey, I have, that's not real loud.
All right. James?
That decimal is based on a complaint called into the police department and measured at the property line of the person who called in the complaint. That has nothing to do with the noise in the establishment. It has to do with a complaint being filed and a reading taken at that person's property line. And if the noise at that person's property line is as much as my dishwasher, that's why we have an ordinance prohibiting it.
Okay, so what you're saying, because I don't know decimals, so what you're saying is when they stood on the edge of the property and they could hear the music, it was like they were standing right next, right next to your dishwasher? Is that what you're saying? Because those aren't real loud, at least not the ones I've been around.
If it exceeds 65 dBs at the property line of the complainant, that exceeds the noise level.
Oh, like, okay, I'm a mile away from here, and if there was a massive music party going on here and I could hear it, they would check it up at my house?
Correct.
Okay. Hmm, okay.
Mr. Mitchell?
And the noise you're talking about, the noise committee didn't deal with, they were dealing with the industrial noise here, that was already in the ordinance, long established and long left.
Right. But it was supposed, and seeing that's what I couldn't remember if there'd been any changes. I know it had been looked at.
But the nice thing about the noise ordinance is that when the folks got together and everything, the chamber came in and looked at the new literature and the stuff that was going out, adapted some wording in there to talk about the effect of noise within the corridor in town. And then the police department, in their infinite wisdom, used discretion and now approached people that are potentially too loud, and they're saying, hey, knock it off. And for the most time, that works, but there are obviously a certain percentage of people that aren't going to follow it, and they're the ones getting the ticket. And for the first time ever, they don't have to use the loud muffler for the state as the ordinance where most of the ticket money went to the state. Instead, they use the ordinance here in the city, and should they unfortunately have to write a ticket, that money stays in the city.
Just to reiterate what you've just said, in the last session of the district court, we did have three tickets that were noise ordinance violations come through. They're the first of the, I believe, two of them at least are first under this new ordinance, one may have been the other. One was set for trial, two entered police, and we're paying fines and costs that go to the city.
Because most of them are out of state or out of town.
So, one involved a loud motorcycle, and the other two were loud automobiles.
Well, I do thank everybody for the clarification on my part.
And as far as the clean city, the issue that I've been getting recently and everything is the fact that once the council got together and looked at the issue, and taking feedback from real estate agents and various other people in town, what we needed was consistent enforcement of that ordinance. And anytime you make changes in structure, it takes a while to adapt and everything. But I think what we've seen at this table tonight is the mayor, as the administrator of the city, has provided leadership and direction in this process, and therefore, by human nature, we will start seeing consistent enforcement over a period of time. And I think that's very important for any new ordinances, is to show that there is leadership and there is follow-up to that ordinance, to be sure that it's applied equitably. Because I'm still getting phone calls from, sometimes from agents and are mentioned that there are certain streets on this town with houses and everything for sale, and they'll take prospective buyers to them, and they'll get over there and they'll, they'll take a look at what's going on in the neighborhood, and they'll go, I don't want to be in this area. And here we are, with tourism as the major industry here, and part of that tourism is the quaintness and the effect of this town. And if we're out marketing this town for light industry or more tourists, obviously the ambience of this town, not just the downtown area, but the surrounding areas, and to people that are coming here to buy second homes or homes, is very important. And we definitely put a lot of thought and effort into this, so just putting the paper in an, putting it on paper, putting it in an ordinance, the most important thing was that it be enforced consistently and continuously. That's it.
Anything else? All right, get a motion to talk about the water meter installation?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I kind of, again, briefly mentioned it, and unfortunately, I lost my notes. No, I found my notes. How about that? Thank you. We have over 1,800 water meters in town, which is, you know, more than I had thought. So far, the, what we've been doing is looking at replacing the larger meters, and that's where we've been going on this. We are, I think I've sent y'all, gave y'all copies of a report that Dwayne gave us. We basically replaced about 15% of the larger meetings, meters, but within that, we have almost doubled our revenue sources just from those meters in two there. We are, a lot of these meters, we were, are on backorder, and we're waiting for the other meters to come in, and eventually we'll have all the meters replaced. We're looking at, some of them are also, the meters will be the types that will be a digital, and they won't be a wireless reading, but the people will be able to go up to the meter and be able to read it, and also be able to find out if there's a better method of leaks and when they're leaking, hours of leaking and things like that. So we're coming up with some better metering system in two there. As we all know, we're, we're working towards getting our revenues for our meters over the 50% mark. And, you know, we're getting there. You know, I think this year, again, according to Dwayne, by the end of the summer, we should have all the meters replaced that we're going to be replacing in two there. So that includes residential and commercial. So, yes, sir?
So if we have approximately 1,800 meters, and about 95% of them need to be replaced, and 15% got replaced so far, that's a little less than, say, 300 meters so far. So you're saying Dwayne's anticipating by the end of summer that he'll have 95% of 1,800 meters?
That's what he's saying.
Because the question...
Well, I'm not sure all of the 1,800 need to be replaced.
He said 95, replacing 95% of the water meters and the vast majority of commercial, so I was going on 95% of 1,800 would be replaced. Now, I'm reading it backwards?
I don't think they all need to be replaced.
Yeah.
The ones that need to be replaced.
We're replacing 95% of the water meters.
And the vast majority of all water.
And the vast majority, so give or take. So we've done about 300. But knowing, again, that we spend a lot of money out of the general fund for, it obviously is a high priority project to start generating some revenue for a change. That would be my only point, because this is, this is one of the most significant projects this city's taken on in a long time.
It is. James?
Well, and lest we forget that our bond issue is dependent on...
Yes, oh, that's a good point.
...the revenue, and not increasing residential and business water rates is also another factor in addressing the leakage. So it pays off substantially for everybody in the community.
In the long, even though some people are getting bigger bills, that, they should have probably had the bills all along.
Well, sorry. They have inexpensive water for all along, too.
They had free water for a long time.
Free water for a long time.
Yeah. Anything else? All right, agenda setting. Joyce?
Well, I've got, I don't know how the council feels about this, but I've, I think we've all gotten an email asking us to revisit the circus, the wild animal entertainment ordinance. I don't know if we want to do that on the agenda right now or not. I don't know how we feel about it. I think, I can't imagine anybody in this town booking a circus after the uproar we had over the last one, but it's a possibility. Do we want to put that on the agenda? Again, I think the last time, what happened to that ordinance? Did we just...
Failed.
It failed.
It was three to three.
Failed, yeah. Well, I'm bringing it up because I got the email, and I feel it's my duty as council person to bring it up. So do we want to put it on, I'm not asking for it to be on the agenda, but I want a consensus. Is that something we want to revisit again?
You just want to discuss it and see if you get a second.
Well...
Is there a second for putting it on the agenda?
I'll second it.
You'll second putting it on the agenda?
As a topic for discussion on the agenda.
Well, okay, we want to...
Good.
I feel like I'm kind of venturing into, I don't know.
Like you haven't gone there before.
I don't know if I want to do this.
Wild...
It failed on the second reading, that's what it did. And I think, I think if we're going to put it on the agenda, I think we should consider the ordinance that we had before simply not approving of wild animal entertainment, visiting wild animal entertainment. It's been suggested that we amend the cruelty to animals ordinance, but I, from the passion that the people who own circuses showed the last time we were here, if we just go down the list and say, well, it's against the law to own a bullhook and a taser, et cetera, et cetera, then they're going to find a way around it.
Okay.
So anyhow.
We'll discuss it later.
All right. Mickey?
Nothing.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, I'd like to see, potentially have a discussion about the process for franchises within the city of Eureka Springs.
Process?
For franchises within the city of Eureka Springs.
Particular franchises, like electrical, SWEPTO, cable, or just...
The process for, for, the process that goes around the issue of franchise as a discussion.
How franchises are established.
Yes, sir, how they process, the process of franchises and the city, how they process them.
All right, Ms. Madam Clerk?
Needs a second, but...
Wait a second?
Second.
Anything else?
No, sir.
James?
Not tonight.
Mr. McClung?
No.
No.
All right. City Council Communes, we'll go back around, starting with you this time.
First. Well, I was able to attend a new city council persons workshop in Little Rock, and it was really beneficial. I think that I learned a lot. It's amazing the resources that the state of Arkansas has to support its cities. That's really what shocked me.
Mr. McClung?
Yeah, just, you know, I was appreciative to be able to go underneath the auditorium the other day and get that firsthand knowledge of what's going on under there. And it's, it's really unfortunate, it's one of those things out of sight, out of mind, you know, and, but it's not good. It really, it really isn't. It's got to be addressed, and it's going to have to be soon. So I appreciate the mayor following up with it, you know, and because he was there and he understands the seriousness of it, and it's just one of those projects that's just going to have to be addressed. Glad we went down there.
Thanks, Jerry. James?
Well, you touched on it briefly in your state of the city address, and I just wanted to emphasize it a little bit more. Things are changing in Eureka Springs, you know, and that's always a good thing, you know. We should never remain stagnant in the community. There's been some angst about business closings, but that's been the natural cycle of Eureka Springs in the 40-some years I've either visited or been a resident in the community. I can tell you that there's three new businesses going in within a half a block of my business. And I can tell you about other proposed hotels going in in the, in the core of the city, which is a first, I think. I can't remember any, well, the one up on the hill here. So, yeah, you know, things are changing. I definitely think things are changing for the better. And, you know, there is some attrition, and I feel for the businesses that, you know, I've, this isn't the first business I've had, I failed it, my first business, and, you know, some of the things my family was in decades ago, they're closed and shuttered and no more, but be encouraged. I think 15, like the mayor said, is going to be a really good year for the city, so take heart. There's a lot of new things happening in Eureka Springs that we'll all find out here in the months to come, and I'm really big on the city, without a doubt.
Thank you. David?
I think for city council, this is going to be the year, and the mayor and all the department has, this is going to be the year of attention, a lot of attention to infrastructure in the city, attempts to find the financial ways, means to support the improvement of the infrastructure for the citizens and for the businesses here in this town so that everybody can prosper together. And taking care of the city, the way it looks, the way it is structured, the way it's maintained is highly important, and I think with this council and the leadership of the mayor and the attention to detail and processes, that we will be successful in making some improvement.
Oh, this is just from my generation, which is most of us here. Forty-two years ago tomorrow is the anniversary of the signing of the Vietnam Peace Accord with the official ending of the war the following day. Forty-two years, I have found, we only remember what war does for 40 years, and then we try it again. That's it.
Will we ever stop fighting? Joyce?
No, I don't have anything. Except that my, it bit me.
Your name tag.
Yes, my name tag bit me. I'm not angry.
Well, we've got some dates coming up. Gosh, January's going through so fast. You know, before we know it, spring's going to be here, we're going to start off, Valentine's Day's going to be here, which is kind of a kickoff our season in a way. But February 1, we'll have the Auditorium Classic Rebel Without a Cause at 7:00 p.m. If y'all haven't seen that, that, yeah, James Dean.
I just got that movie.
And February 5, we'll have the first annual mayor's ball for Mardi Gras. Y'all please come, it's going to be at the Basin Park at 6:00 p.m., and that should be, should be a lot of fun. February the next, February the 7th, I think actually, February 6, the next day, is Eureka Gras Night Parade, yeah. And then that Saturday, February the 8th, is classic movies east of Eden. So we've got a couple of good movies coming in down two there. Mr. McClung, did you have some?
Yeah, I think in the, isn't the local jam that's on the 7th, Saturday the 7th? What's not?
I don't know.
I think so.
Maybe.
In the auditorium, I believe it's the 7th.
All right.
I think so.
Many of y'all were probably looking at this, speaking of municipal league, we received the tourist development award for the state of Arkansas for cities under 5,000 people in Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Pretty cool.
Add to our collection.
Add to our collection, that's right. You know, it doesn't matter, and y'all know this too, every place we go, and you say, where are you from? Say, oh, a small town in northwest Arkansas, Eureka Springs. Oh, I love that town! Well, we have to remember that, you know, that's the best publicity we can get. And we are the diplomats that go out there, and people see us, and when we're on the streets, people see us. And if we have that positive attitude, these are the things that can happen, and positive things happening two there. So that was an exciting time on two there. And I understand last Friday was a big day for Joyce Zeller, having her birthday. So happy birthday, Joyce.
Thank you. Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right. Thank you, guys.
Funny you should say that, Panama City five days ago... Funny you should say that, Panama City, five days ago, sitting in a hot tub, talking, they go, where are you from? Oh, Eureka Springs, yeah!